Good evening. Welcome to the July 11th, 2017 meeting of the Titusville City Council at 6:30. I call the group to order. We do have a quorum. Reverend A.J. Davis from St. James AME Church is here to give us the invocation. Sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, come to you now in the name of our Lord and Savior. Oh God, I pray that you will keep America under your wings and help her to continue to abide under the shadow of the Almighty God. Heavenly Father, I pray for the President of this nation, all the executive branch, and all the members of Congress and the Senate, and all the leadership of all local, state, regional, and federal agencies, commissions, and governments of this nation. I ask for a special blessing upon the city officials of this great city and growing city, Titusville, Florida. I ask that you guide and direct them in every way, and thank you for your protective hand that has shielded our city. I ask you to continue to bless and strengthen the leadership of this city, give them the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that they will need to make wise and sound decisions for the good of all people. I pray that you will not take your hand off Titusville and that your people will dwell safely in this place and prosper abundantly according to your will. In the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our first order of business is approval of minutes from May 23rd, 2017, and June 13th, 2017. Do I have a motion, please?
You have a motion.
Okay. Any corrections or any changes?
I need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I do. Is that a second?
Yes, second.
I have a second. Any additions or corrections? I hear none. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. We have no special recognitions or presentations, boards, or commissions. Mr. City Manager?
Currently, there's one vacancy for an alternate member with an unexpired term to expire on 31 October 2018. There's currently one applicant on file for your consideration. Mr. Dennis Jonas has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on this board. His application is attached as part of your packet.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
We would move to approve Dennis Jonas as a member of that board.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. The Mr. City Manager?
For Resolution Number 1-2017, each year, the City Council will confirm each of the school selection and appointments by the second regular City Council meeting in April. However, in May 2017, one of the members resigned and caused a vacancy. Therefore, it's recommended that the City Council appoint Diamond Washington as the 11th grade representative of Titusville High School to the 2017-2018 Student Advisory Council.
All right, Counsel.
I'd like to make that motion to appoint Diamond Washington in that position.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, same sign. Passes unanimously. Petitions and requests from the public?
Mayor, before we get to petitions and requests, I'd like the clerk to read the procedures.
Oh, yes. Yes, please.
Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Sign-up and oath cards are located on the table over against the wall, the left side over there. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items.
Thank you, clerk. Anybody that would like to speak on the petitions and requests? Yes, sir. Come on right up. If you want to come up front, anybody else wants to sit in the front so we can move it right along?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Good evening.
My name's Tom House. I'm a citizen of the city of Titusville. I've been here for just shy of 51 years, which is practically all my life. I want to talk to you a little bit about the insurance again. I know we've talked about it several times in the past, but I believe that there's 15 members that are considered retirees in the drop program that got left out of the proper tier, and that would be the Tier One of the insurance. We were left in the Tier Three of the insurance, and after some research and some reading back of my drop paperwork, I contacted some of the other drop members about it, and they agreed with me, and we're coming before Counsel to ask you all to hear what we have to say and point out some issues in the drop, and then ask you to take a vote to put us into the Tier One insurance. Back in December of 1990, when I hired on here, Sheila Hutchison was the HR Director, and I was fresh out of the Army. And she told me that my benefits, if I stayed in the city of Titusville, would be that I would have insurance for the rest of my life. But as a young soldier just out of the Army, I asked her, "Sheila, what do you mean by that?" And she says, "Well, the city will provide you insurance if you stay through your retirement." And at the end, when you become eligible for Medicare, that will become primary and the city will become secondary. Young soldier, I didn't think much of it, but I stayed here in the city of Titusville because my benefits were better than what other agencies could give me, and I didn't trust to go out to the Cape because the Cape was never a secure job. We've seen that with the Challenger disaster and other disasters out there. Back in December, or back in 2012, the city, not this council, but the prior council, started toying with our pensions. And I was looking at my pension, and I did the time and the paperwork on it and realized I was going to lose thousands of dollars if I didn't get into the, didn't reach my pension. In 2003, I don't know, '03 I think it was, or '04, Jim McGuinness, a former commander, talked me into buying two of my three years' military pension back. I paid dearly for that. In total, for three years, I think I paid about $52,000 out of my pocket to buy three years of military experience. I've heard another former employee say to this council that we can buy airtime. Police and fire officers cannot, or police and firefighters cannot buy airtime. We can only buy military time and any certified time with another agency. So I bought two years, and then when they started toying with the pension, I decided I need to buy that third year so I can get into the drop and secure my pension, and that's what I did. In 2014, this council said, "We're going to change the insurance. If you don't get out of the drop, you're going to, we're going to take away part of your insurance. You're going to, we're going to pay..." They put that cap on that y'all took away from the other retirees, and that's what I'm asking for the 15 of us that are in the drop. Now, when I signed up for the drop, I had to sign an agreement with the city of Titusville, as did every other person in the drop, and there are several of us here tonight that entered that drop. The very first sentence, it says, and if y'all don't mind, I'd like to give you a copy of it, and I highlighted it so you can see exactly what I'm talking about. This is my actual pension drop that I've, I got one for the City Manager as well. I actually scratched out my name and all, and then I thought, "Well, that's kind of foolish because, you know, we're talking about me." And we're talking about the others in the drop. I draw your attention to that first page. It says, "In exchange for my membership in the drop, I acknowledge and agree to the following." And the second one, second highlight, says that in order to become a member of the drop, I must have retired. That's very important. Must have retired. At this city, when somebody retires, their health insurance is locked in. That's the way it's always been. I feel because of the way, what that says, "Must have retired," means that we had to retire in order to enter into the drop. It says it in writing. "Under normal service retirement, an elected for receipt of my retirement benefits into my drop."
Would you like additional time?
I would greatly like additional time if I could have it.
I would make that motion.
How long will it take?
Another couple minutes.
Three minutes?
I would, I'll strive my best, sir.
All right. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? There's none opposed. Go ahead.
That third highlight on that page says, "I agree that my participation in the drop," which the first one says, "I must have retired," okay, which I believe and the other drop members believe, locked us into our health benefits, the same health benefits that those in the Tier One program have now. If you skip over to the third page, and you're more than welcome to keep these and read those if you haven't read it before, that third page, there's a highlight there that says that "I understand that upon the effective date of my participation in the drop," which is when I must have retired, "I will begin to accrue drop benefits as provided by the ordinance or for in the ordinance." And if you go down to the bottom, I highlighted that. I don't, because of my time, I don't want to talk much about it, but you can read it. It says that "I will forego any other applicable additional improvements." What that says to us is if, for some miraculous reason, the pension changes and you jump, you get bumped them up to a 4% multiplier and they get better benefits and all, that doesn't affect those in the drop or the retirees. We just don't get it because we're considered retired. Now, here's where part of that kicker is that comes in. On that last page, it says, "As of the effective date of my participation in the drop," which was the date I must have retired in order to enter the drop, "I will also be ineligible to receive disability and pre-retirement death benefits under the terms of the ordinance." So when I got that, I asked Julie Enright, "What does that mean?" And she says, "Well, Tom, that means that if you die, your family doesn't get death benefits." I said, "So I'm going out to work for five more years. I've agreed to work five more years, but if I get killed in the line of duty, my wife or my family's not going to get my, the death benefits that they deserve, the two and a half years of your annual salary and whatever else goes with it?" She says, "That's correct. We don't offer that to retirees." Then it goes on. I said, "Disability, what's that mean?" "Well, you can't get disability if you're injured." I said, "So if I go out and I'm running code, lights and sirens, to an accident or to an incident where somebody's harming somebody, and I get T-boned and I get paralyzed, I can't get disability benefits?" She said, "Not for retirees, and you're considered a retiree." Now, I go back to the insurance, and I'm finishing up. All of us in the drop, we were hired before the date that is on that tier. Every one of us retired, as per this contract, before April 2014. We would like to be included in that Tier One of the insurance. I've been around this city for 27 years as an employee. I know that this is the time, and I've talked to a few people, this is a time to come to this council because the budget process is starting, and you need to know about this before you go into the budget process. Because I truly believe you need to count these 15 employees who have got over 140 years of service sitting right in this room to this city as a Tier One insurance employee. Now, could we have got out when they said that? Absolutely. We would have lost a lot of money, and I'll tell you, I had a prior department head come to me and said, "Tom, you're stupid to get out because this council's going to go after the retirees' insurance." We all know that happened because we saw it. It came before this council, and you rectified some of it. And we're asking you today, as drop members who are considered retirees by the language, to include us as a Tier One insurance recipient and not a Tier Three where we were left at. I'm passionate. I'm not trying to be disrespectful. I love this city. I was born in Orlando but raised here. I have a passion for this city. I could have went to work elsewhere, and I chose to stay in Titusville. My retirement's going to be outside of the city, but I still have, I get goosebumps talking about Titusville. And we would like to see y'all vote to put us, the 15 of us, back into the group we belong in and that we were promised when we were hired.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there other people that wish to speak on this subject? Unless there's an objection by anybody, I'm going to let them talk first before we go to discussion. Sir, if you'll come up?
I'm here to speak on a different subject.
Oh, no, no. I'm just talking about on this subject. Anybody else speaking on this subject? Okay, I don't see anyone. Mr. City Manager, do you want to comment on this at this time, or?
Yes, sir.
Mr. City Attorney, anything you'd like to add to this?
Well, you've heard the gentleman. I would suggest that tonight would not be an appropriate time to take a vote on anything. If this council's inclined to consider that, I would suggest you would ask for additional information for your consideration and schedule that for a different meeting, once you've acquired that information or done any cost studies that I would suggest, and noticed it. But if you want to take action on something, in my opinion, tonight would not be the time to vote.
Okay. Any comments?
I would agree that tonight isn't the night to address it, and we do need more information. But legally, I'm sitting here going, "If you're retired, you're retired. If you're retired for one reason, then you're retired." So it may be that they fit into that category.
It could well be, but I have to agree that we don't have enough information tonight on, to make the decision tonight. This is kind of, we're getting it.
We don't have buttons. Very scary with no buttons.
Yeah, I definitely want to hear more. I guess I'm a little surprised. I didn't realize we had left a group out. I don't think I even understand totally the difference between the Tier One and the Tier Three. And so I need to hear more, and obviously, my heart is to try to remedy the situation in the proper manner. But I don't feel comfortable right now because I don't feel like I know exactly what I'm doing and how I'm remedying it. But I think we need to address this, and we need to get the information to do so.
No consensus on that?
Yes, sir. I feel comfortable with what I believe I heard, and what I believe that I heard was, as members choosing to participate in the drop program, that effective of the day that you sign on to drop, you are effectively retired. Therefore, if that retirement date on entrance of drop meets the threshold of our Tier One that we looked at in those bracketing, then why aren't they included as retired employees? So that's what I heard. I would definitely welcome a chance to go back on that, look at it, understand it, but most importantly, then bring it back to Counsel. I think that would be a critical step with whatever the findings are from that. So I would hope after research, we would bring that back, and we would expedite bringing it back.
I would imagine we'll have a special meeting on this. I think it's that important, and we'll probably do that. All right, well, we'll go to the next subject then. Gary, thank you for making the presentation.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Tom.
My name's Gary Boyer. I served as a Florida law enforcement officer for almost 29 years in the state of Florida, 25 years accredited service here in the city of Titusville. My wife has been an elementary school teacher for over 30 years, with 28 years serving here in Titusville. We have several businesses in Brevard County, two here in the city, and we're trying to bring in a third. I find myself confused and in need of your help to continue my business as is. I obtained a city license for Real Pit Barbecue and RPC Foods in June of 2016 for a location on Bobby Lane. It's owned M1. My license is from the state and county as a food establishment with restrictions of non-seating, no dine-in type eating. My state license was incorporated as part of my license to the city, and my license was granted by the city, BTR, to those companies, with the only restriction on it that there was no dine-in eating. Generally, we can operate 24/7, so there's 168 hours out of there. About two and a half months ago, I got better at my marketing, better at my advertising. We advertise for people to come in and pick up, call ahead, do different things. They come in, they order up food, and we sell it out. That accounts for approximately 6% of the time that we're actually open or available to be open. However, I received a notice on the 29th from the city, signed by Joy Campbell, that Real Pit Barbecue did not have a license in the city of Titusville. I called in on the 3rd to find out what was happening because I had a license in my hand and signed by Joy, and she explained that several letters had gone out over her signature. She wasn't aware of the full details and transferred me to Tim Ford. I received a, I spoke with him over the phone, and I have his email and a copy of it available for you. He referred to Section 2854 for the land development regulations and zoning, stating that we were in M1 zoning and that it doesn't allow for takeout restaurants. I have a copy of the M1 zoning, which does allow for restaurants with a limited use, which mine has, my catering and commissary has a limited use of no dine-in eating. I thought we were good to go. I've reviewed everything with friends of my city. Everything seemed to be correct, yet I'm being told that I'm operating without a license, which is a very scary thing when you're new to businesses. I'm asking for your help and directing that this stop and that this end, and that we be allowed to continue to operate the business as is. We're going along. We're serving the best interest of the community. We're trying to develop. I'm trying to bring in additional businesses into Titusville. We've worked very hard at that. This is my city. I've claimed it forever. I still claim it. I still work here. I still want to do different things, and I'm trying to convince everybody that Titusville is business-friendly, that Titusville is making improvements on that, and that Titusville wants to continue going that way. And that's how I'm trying to attract new businesses in here and develop and build some of our own as well. So that's what I'm looking for, is it's sometimes difficult to get that message across when we have little things like this where we try to interpret a business out of existence. So I'm asking for the council's help to direct someone to help us fix this problem so that we can resolve it, whether it mean change a wording on a license or whatever we got to do, but so that we can go forward and keep operating as a business. We're supporting our customers. We're supporting our neighbors. We're supporting our community. We're doing everything. We're trying to get every license, pay all the taxes, do everything right. So we're just asking for your help to continue on that path.
Thank you, sir. Again, I don't think we have enough information to make that decision tonight, but Mr. City Manager, will you meet with Mr. Boyer and research this?
Sure.
See if we can't straighten it out? It sounds like you're in a bad place, and we don't want you to be there.
Thank you very much. This is copies of the different licenses and the same, in the case anybody needs it. There's five copies there.
Thank you, sir.
I had a question.
Okay.
Mr. Boyer, I understand the concern because as a businessman, your business, you're trying to worry about, you know, you're trying to take care of business, and then all of a sudden, you know, you get something that could threaten the way of going about it, and it's the last thing you really want to deal with, especially if you're trying to do everything right. As part of this process of trying to find an answer, because I think everybody's going to want to come to, we would hope that everybody would want to support you and come to the conclusion, to your point of being a business-friendly community, is there any steps that you would suggest that would help give confidence to you as a businessman that as we go through this, is there anything that you would like the city to do while we research this or while we go through this process that could take the anxiety, the angst, and the worry out of it while we go through this?
Probably a better job communicating.
Okay.
The first notice that I had received formally of anything was a letter in the mail stating I had no license, with no further explanation than an application for a license. And then the email that I received, you know, after I specifically said I needed the violations actually listed out, if you're trying to, you know, say, "I can't be here," was one of, "It's not authorized in the zoning."
Right.
As, you know, you're operating as a different business, you're not operating within the zoning and so forth. But there was no pre-communication from anybody. There was no, "Hey, come down and meet with us so we can talk about this." It was all, "It's already done on staff's side," is the impression I was left with, is that I have really no course. They've already made up their mind, and here it is, you don't have a license. So that left me to come to you to help me.
And understanding it's, and at this point, understanding it's at this point right now, I guess the next, my next question is, so knowing it's here, I get the process leading up to, is there anything else that now that it's here, what are some expectations that you have?
Well, I'd hope that I'd be able to continue operating until we can resolve this and that we all go forward to resolve it in a positive way.
Okay.
We've been a business for a year and a month, doing well. We've hit that point in business where, you know, if you've all been in businesses, you understand, you know, it's make it or break at time. It's time to move to that next level, and we're there.
Okay.
Right now, to be quite honest, I'm trying to develop a restaurant.
Okay.
And I have backers that are in that are looking at my interaction with you based on my loans to see how I can do, if I can bring it in here or not.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mayor, if I would?
Yes, sir.
So right now, you have a letter that says you don't have a license.
I have a letter that says I don't have a license and an application, and then I have an email that says M1 zoning, and the copy of the email is there, that we're operating as a takeout restaurant, and that takeout restaurants are not authorized in M1 zoning.
So are you in business right now?
Right now, I am still continuing in business. Nobody has told me that yet that I cannot or I will be fined.
I would like to know that.
So I'm hoping to stay that way for right now.
Yeah, I would like to know that he is in business until we come to a decision. I don't like the way he got a letter and says, "You're done, and I'm glad you're still running." I just want to make sure that we don't, on our side of the board, do something that suddenly he's got a fine or he's got something. Unless I'm missing something here, he should still be in business.
But Counsel, if I, I don't have a button, but if I'm going to point out, this isn't at a council level. These type of issues don't necessarily come to Counsel. When we're dealing with licenses, business permits, interpretations of the code, zoning, there is a process. And what I'd like to do is find out from staff where we are in the process. Ms. Bisacca may know. may know, and because we don't know the facts.
Correct.
But there is a process. So what we can do is find out where we are in that process, speak with Mr. Boyer, talk to staff. It may be a situation where there's a disagreement on an interpretation of the code and there's processes and steps. There's the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. For sometimes there's a dispute about an interpretation of a use, it might involve the planning board, but it's not something that comes to council to look at interpretations or appeals. There is a process though, and so what I'd like to do is speak with Mr. Boyer and staff and then we can certainly advise him of the steps to hope, help remedy that process or appeal it and we can see where that goes. At one point, it may come to council is if citizens are not happy with the code is written or interpretations, you have the ability to change the code. That does lie with you. So if this council would like, we can certainly give Mr. Boyer and talk to, about the steps to go through if you would like to appeal staff's interpretation of the code.
I would add to that and just ask you to do it as quickly as possible, get with him and then try to resolve what can be resolved and.
Right, and the proper, the proper steps will determine, be based on what the facts are, so we'll have to figure that.
Certainly, certainly. But he's obviously at a critical point in his business, so we want to get it done as quickly as possible. Anything else?
May I ask some questions? Gary, you got the license a year, year and a half ago?
It was in June of 2016.
Okay, so a year ago. At that time, were you doing takeout kind of business?
Yeah, catering is all part of that because some people want to pay for you to be there, stand there and carve a prime rib for them.
Okay.
Some people don't want to pay for all of that, so they just want to come in and pick up the food for 100 people or 200 people or 10 people or five, depending on, you know, what size their party is.
So nothing has changed over the last year about your business other than maybe your advertising?
My advertising, my decorating, I got better with that and set the hours out there to try to attract more people and it's given us more catering business.
Okay.
So we improved my marketing skills a little bit.
Okay, so basically, you're not doing anything different?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from council? I guess we'll set up a meeting for you with the city attorney and see what the issues are and hopefully we can resolve it.
Okay. Since nobody has said that I have to shut my doors, I'm going to continue working while we resolve this until somebody tells me different.
That's not something council can really address.
I would ask you to have some consideration for his situation certainly, but we can't, we can't break the rules, you understand that, but we'll see what happens, okay?
But on the other hand, you can get with the city manager as soon as possible.
Well, we've got to get the city attorney.
Yeah, well, somebody will let me know what I need to do next.
Right.
We'll contact you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, still on the petitions and requests, Mr. Molotar?
My name is Roger Molotar, 5417 River Edge Drive. I'm here to say that the Marriott extended stay has been permitted, but not through a lot of effort by last-minute negotiations with staff and everything. And one of the things that happened was we, Helen Hauser Road terminates at the southwest corner of the Quality Inn and, and there's an easement that goes all the way to the south end, the tree line where I show that we're going to extend the street. There's a thing in the code that says apparently that the building permit shouldn't be issued until the street is 100% accepted by the city, but I'm saying that that's probably where we need to have a code change because in this particular instance, what we're doing is we're going to build a brand-new road, we're going to complete it 100%, and then we're going to put 400 truckloads of overloaded probably dirt in there, concrete trucks, trusses, framing, all making 90-degree turns on that road so they can get up on top of the pad that the Marriott's being built on, and it just doesn't make any sense to me. We're going to build a brand-new road and then tear it up. Why don't we have a place in the code that says in a particular case like this, that you don't have to go, that the road can be finished further into the project, left more to us as the developer to make a coordinate with the process so that we don't tear up a new road and then have to redo it. And this road is unique in that nobody else has any business whatsoever to be past that barrier, that red line that I put on the print. There's no other businesses back there, there's, we own everything back to the city property, which the city owns the property to the south of us. And in fact, I wish that we had a great big truck sitting there that said, nobody can come back here because they don't have any business being back there. We don't need the city road, we don't need the city-accepted road, so I'm asking the city to consider changing the code to give some versatility in a situation like this. Secondly, we've signed an agreement that we would have the road done in 90 days from June 28th, whenever the date was that we signed that thing, and I'm asking that we find some way to extend that to January 1st so that we can get more of those trucks off of the road before we actually complete the road.
You have more time if you like, you still have 30 seconds?
I don't need any more time, I think I've said it all I want to say.
Okay. Again, we have to put you to the people who understand what you're doing and have worked with you on it and see what the situation is, so.
Okay.
Any comments from council?
That does make sense, what you're saying makes sense.
Let me see, and I understand, and I understand the situation. I'm only presenting this tonight so that we can start the process, so that we can get our extension before it's up in 70 more days and so that we can keep, so we can not have to put the street in until we're really ready on this, in this particular case. And the staff did a tremendous job. I can only pass compliments on compliments of what the staff, Ms. Busaka and everybody on the staff really, really worked hard to make this thing happen. We had a real situation where if we didn't get the permit issued by July 1st, the Marriott was going to pull the franchise, I mean, we had to have it or we were going to lose the whole deal. So that's, and the staff recognized that and did work many, many hours of burning the midnight oil, I think, to get it done, and I really appreciate that. One other thing I'd like to suggest for Gary and everybody else that finds themselves in this situation, because I've been there many times too, I wish we had a committee that we could go to that consisted of at least half business people and maybe half staff, where these decisions could be made, the guy needs his license, let's get on with it. Instead of going through this process, and when he has to go to Board of Adjustments and Appeals, that's finally, you can't, you can't go anywhere after the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. It's a final decision and if you don't like that, when you're done. I wish that we were business friendly by having business people help make these decisions and be binding to the city. My suggestion.
Thank you. You'll be working with the same people that helped you before, so I think you're.
I understand the process.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Anybody else on the petitions and requests? I see nobody coming up, so we'll go to the next items.
Yes, sir. On the request from Mr. Molotar, I didn't know if there was any direction that was needed from council, but I would have interest.
Ms. Busaka is out there and I think she understands and the city manager and the city attorney have heard what's going on. Gentlemen, do you need any more?
Okay.
Nope, we're all set.
All right, thank you.
Next is consent agenda, please, the city manager.
Sir, I believe you want to call if there's any cards first and if there's any items that the council would like to pull?
Yes, that's right, sorry. Let me see which one of these things it is. Okay, clerk, are there any cards that have been submitted for any consent agenda items?
No, sir.
Okay. Counsel, are there any items you want to pull off the consent agenda? I see none. I see none. There are no, nothing to pull off then. Motion to approve the consent agenda items A to H.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all right. City manager, would you read the items, please?
Consent agenda item 8A, approve the award of an annual contract to Eco Tech Consultants Incorporated of Vero Beach, Florida, in the amount of $32,880 for monitoring operations and maintenance services of the Blue Herring Wetlands for three-year term with an option to administratively renew annually for two additional years. And authorize the city manager to execute the contract. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the transfer of ownership from K-9 Lex to Officer Mark Jennings. Consent agenda item 8C, approve advisability to amend the land development regulation Chapter 30 relating to high-security fences. Consent agenda item 8D, approve the award of contract for bid number 17B026 to Flanders Electric Motor Service of Lakeland, Florida, for replacement of three transfer pumps at the Morning Dove Water Treatment Facility in the amount of $111,000. And authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Consent agenda item 8E, approve the purchase of Tightrope CB Flex Light Video Server from Encore Broadcast Solutions of Altamont Springs in the amount of $18,808. Consent agenda item 8F, approve advisability for staff to prepare amendments to the land development regulations relating to access and site plan requirements. Consent agenda item 8G, approve the purchase of a 2008 Freightliner truck with a 200115 vector sewer sweeper from Environmental Products of Florida. In accordance with the terms of the Florida Sheriff's Association Bid Award, FSA 16VEH14.0, specifications 51 and 14, in the amount of $403,946. Consent agenda item 8H, approve modification of eligibility criteria for the city of Titusville 150th Anniversary Tree Program.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on any of these? If not, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Next item is ordinance's second reading. City attorney, do you want to read the rules?
Yes, sir. During this public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi-judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. The cards are located on this table to my left. Those speaking in favor of requests will be heard first, those opposed will be heard second, and those who wish to make a public comment on the item will speak third. The applicant may make a brief rebuttal if necessary. Witnesses may be cross-examined by the applicant, council, staff representatives and such other representatives as authorized by the council. If you have photographs, sketches or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk and she is located to my right at the end of the table. City clerk, have all persons wishing to speak before the city council signed an oath card?
Yes, sir.
If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that does wish to speak on a quasi-judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
Have any council members visited any of the sites or spoken to any members of the public regarding the quasi-judicial item to be reviewed?
No.
No. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
A petition, easement vacation number 1-2017, has been received from Robert Zillich to vacate a portion of the public utility easement. The easement is located on the east side of a single-family lot located at 477 Fern Avenue. The requested easement vacation has been requested because the owner is proposing to expand existing single-family home and the proposed addition will encroach approximately 15 feet into the 40-foot public utility. The applicant is requesting only the portion of the easement that will be encroached upon by the additional, by the addition to be vacated. The total area of the vacation is approximately 1,065 square feet. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this action 6-0.
All right, council, any questions, discussion on this? Not hearing any, I'm sorry?
Cards?
Oh, are there any cards on this?
No, sir.
Do I have a motion on it if there's no discussion?
I'd make a motion to approve easement vacation number 1-2017.
And a second?
Second.
And to be clear, that's resolution number 10-2017.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say.
Roll call vote.
Roll call, that's right. Doug, please, a roll call vote?
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next items?
The applicant, Abel Academics LLC, on behalf of Good Shepherd Lutheran Church of Titusville Incorporated, is requesting a conditional use permit to establish a private school on an 11.7 acre partial located at 2063 Garden Street in the general GU zoning district. The conditional use permit, CUP number 7-2004, was previously approved at the property to allow fellowship hall, a preschool building and to allow an extension of the existing church. The applicant is proposing to utilize a preschool building to establish a private school. Based on the following findings and criteria established in Section 3476 of the Land Development Regulations, the staff recommends approval of the CUP number 4-2017 with conditions that are listed in your packet. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this action 6-0.
Any cards on this?
The applicant's here just for questions.
Does council have any questions?
Staff wants to give a presentation.
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to make a few brief comments about the conditional use permit. In your reports on page 108 of your package, the staff has completed its analysis and finds that the conditional use permit application is consistent with the future land use designation. There are two access points on Garden Street and one access point on Tropic. The applicant is not proposing to modify the existing access points, however, the staff report does recommend that council acknowledge and approve the continued use of the access on Tropic, which is existing. There are, there's shared parking for the church and the school uses and so there is adequate parking because those uses will not be conducted at the same time. The property is located in the city's urban service area. The buildings meet the required setbacks for the GU zoning district and the size of the existing building is not proposed to change. The proposed playground area meets the minimum 50-foot setback requirement. The, also, staff wanted to bring to your attention that the student drop-off and pickup areas and associated stacking areas will be located entirely on-site, so we don't think there'll be an impact. The, so the staff recommends that this be approved with three conditions. Any modifications to the existing site lighting will require submittal and approval of the appropriate permits. The hours of operations shall not be any earlier than 7:00 a.m. nor later than 5:00 p.m. and to approve the continued use of access on Tropic.
Okay, I will officially open the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions of staff at this point?
Real quick, I think I know, but I want to make sure I know. Ms. Busaka, any activity after 5:00 p.m. that doesn't include after-school parent, you know, shows and that sort of thing, that's not part of that?
No, sir, we're just talking about the school itself.
Good, thank you.
Does the applicant have a rebuttal of any kind or desire one? No? Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion from council? I see none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve conditional use permit number 4-2017.
With staff's conditions? With staff's conditions?
With staff, with staff's conditions, excuse me.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion on this matter? If not, all those in favor say yes.
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 Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Ordinance's first reading.
Yes, sir, this is comprehensive plan amendment number 3-2016, which contains ordinances number 17-2017 and ordinances, ordinance number 18-2017, I'd like to read them both together.
Okay.
That's a good view. Ordinance number 17-2017. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 601988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville. By adopting comprehensive plan amendment 3-2016, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan by changing the future land use designation for certain property with parcel ID number 21352800279, located at the southwest corner of US Highway 1 and Dairy Road, from the industrial future land.
the industrial future land use designation to the commercial high-intensity future land use designation, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number eighteen two thousand seventeen. An ordinance, amending ordinance number five nineteen ninety-three of the City of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference, by changing the zoning designation on certain property with parcel ID number twenty-one thirty-five twenty-eight zero zero two seven nine, located at the southwest corner of US Highway one and Dairy Road, from the industrial M-two zoning classification to the community commercial CC zoning classification, and providing for an effective date.
The applicant, John H. Evans, on behalf of the owner, Robert Carl Goethe, is requesting the comprehensive plan amendment to change the city's future land use map and rezone approximately fourteen point seven acres of vacant land located at the southwest corner of US one and Dairy Road. The request is to amend the future land use map from industrial to commercial high-intensity future land use and rezone from industrial M-two to community commercial CC zoning district. Based on the narrative provided by the applicant, no development is proposed. The owner is requesting that the change to commercial land use to align his, this property with the developing uses in the area. During the state's review of the proposed amendment, no objections to the request were received by staff. The correspondence from four agencies, DEO, DEP, FDOT, and St. John's Water Management District that responded to the transmittal letter are included in your agenda packet.
Staff, do you have any comments or presentation?
I was just going to make a brief, if I might, thank you. The staff analysis as contained within your agenda discusses that this parcel was annexed into the city in two thousand five, and at that time, the property was approximately nineteen point five acres in size. It was part of the property occupied by the Brevard Lumber. Since that time, this portion of the fourteen, of fourteen point seven acre portion of the property was split from the larger parcel. The remaining acreage continues to be used by the Brevard Lumber facility. The concrete plant that existed there is no longer in operation, and so the property owner would like to change this from industrial to commercial. The staff did not find that the proposed land use change would encourage urban sprawl. The proposed use is consistent with the locational criteria for commercial land uses. The property's in the city's urban service area, and any transportation impacts will be determined at the time of the development. The property is within the flood zone X, which is an area of minimal flood hazard. The lot meets the minimum zoning requirements, and the staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions of staff? I see none. Are there any cards on this subject?
The applicant's just here to answer questions.
Okay. This is a first reading, so we don't need to vote on this. We'll go on to the next item. Old business. The city manager?
Advisibility to draft a historic preservation local property ad valorem tax exemption program. This item was brought before council on twenty-three May two thousand seventeen. At that meeting, city council sent the item back to the Historic Preservation Board requesting additional information. The requested additional information, including maps showing the number of locations existing designated as historic properties, information regarding the financial impact of the historic preservation local property ad valorem tax exemption program, and questioning the ten-year period. Attached in your packet is, for city council's review, is information from the City of Tampa, City of Orlando's historic tax exemption programs. Other cities in Florida, research by staff, have adopted historic preservation tax exemption programs include Ferdinando Beach, Miami Beach, Coral Gables, St. Petersburg, and the Miami-Dade County. The Historic Preservation Board believes the creation of the historic preservation tax exemption program provides an incentive to property owners of historic structures in the city to invest in the, in the restoration of the structure, which has to be in compliance with the Secretary of Interior standard for rehabilitation and the guidelines for rehabilitating historic buildings. In addition to restoring historic structures in the city, such as, such a program can revitalize older neighborhoods and increase surrounding property values. The economic impact of adopting a historic preservation local property ad valorem tax exemption program should be minimal based on the information shown in the attached exhibits titled General Impact Analysis of the Historic Property Ad Valorem Tax Exemption Program in Titusville. The percentage of existing and potential historic structures, the vast majority of potential historic structures, will not qualify for the program. It's less than one percent of the total number of buildings in the city. Using a typical medium-value residential property in the city as an example, that is improved to double its value, the analysis indicates the exemption of nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-four cents is generated in this instance. Over a ten-year period, this amounts to approximately nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty cents. The tax exemption in this instance provides a thirteen-to-one investment in the property value. The amount of the exemption will depend on the cost of the improvements. The Historic Preservation Board recommends that a ten-year time exemption period so that the exemption is, is substantive. The city council has the ability to reduce the exemption period as well as the percentage of the value of the improvements in any ordinance drafted. The Historic Preservation Board and staff estimate that the city would receive approximately one request for tax exemption per year based on the other cities' experiences. Tampa, Orlando receives up to five applications a year, three applications per year respectively. The economic downturn a few years ago, Orlando did not receive any application for a number of years. Staff recommends that council provide advisability regarding whether to develop an ordinance creating a historic preservation local property tax, ad valorem tax exemption program for improvements to qualified historic properties within the City of Titusville.
Thank you, sir. Council, this is just to give an advisability, so what's your pleasure?
Well?
Go right ahead.
Go right ahead. I like the idea. I'm, I am concerned about what is going to happen in the next year to our tax base with the new homestead exemptions, and are we going to have enough money to run our city? What kind of financial shape we're going to be in? On the other hand, I really like the idea of encouraging people to redevelop those homes. I think they add to the city. It adds to our community. So I think for me, if we did it for five years...
Could I?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
That's what happens when you sit eye to eye. Just so you know, the way that we, the staff is proposing that this be written is that each time that someone came in for this exemption would be an individual ordinance, and at that time, the council could decide whether to give one year, up to ten years.
Ooh, okay.
And a ten percent, you know, of the addition, fifty percent of the addition, it would be a case-by-case basis.
I like that.
So that would give a great deal of flexibility for council to determine on each individual project, all of the different things that you would want to consider. So this is not a, staff would not recommend that we propose, we would not propose an ordinance to you that doesn't give you flexibility.
Okay, I like that then, because I am concerned about, you know, what the state may or may not do about, with our taxes this year.
And, well, you should be. But I will also note on this, the tax, the exemption is only on the additional work being done, so it's not like it's going on the whole property. Everybody understands that.
Also, just to be clear, the, anything that, the improvements that have to be made have to meet these federal guidelines for historic structures. So if you were putting in some kind of addition that wasn't historically appropriate and did not meet the federal guidelines, which are very detailed, it would not be eligible.
Okay, okay.
Mayor, if I might?
Yes, sir.
I think we all have the same concern. We don't want to be, you know, sliding away from taxes as we're not sure what's happened from the state, but as I recall, the last time you spoke, you pretty much said the same thing, in that it's pretty specific as to what you can get the tax break for, and it doesn't seem to be overwhelming, and it just seems to be an incentive to, you know, make things better downtown, so I think it's a win-win all the way around.
Any other comments? Not hearing any. We need a, a motion to direct staff to give an appropriate ordinance on this. It's an advisability. I hear...
I'm not sure of the wording you just gave, but I would make the motion to, for the advisability to draft a historic for preservation local property ad valorem tax exemption program ordinance.
That's what I said.
I would, I would do a second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. City manager, the next item?
Yes, sir, new business regulation of medical marijuana dispensaries. In November two thousand sixteen, Florida voters approved a constitutional amendment to allowing medical marijuana use within the state. On ten January two thousand seventeen, city council adopted ordinance number one dash two thousand seventeen to establish a temporary moratorium on the establishment and operation of medical marijuana facilities to permit sufficient time to develop regulations. The moratorium was extended for an additional one hundred and eighty days on thirteen June two thousand seventeen to permit staff to review the state regulations that had not been developed as of the June council meeting. Senate Bill eight A, which is in your packet, was signed into law on twenty-three June two thousand seventeen, sets forth rules regulating several aspects of medical marijuana dispensaries as shown in your summary. The state has given local jurisdictions two options for regulating medical marijuana dispensaries. Local jurisdictions may not prohibit medical marijuana dispensaries or allow dispensaries with the limitations, long as limitations are no more stringent than regulations for pharmacies, except that medical marijuana dispensaries cannot be located closer than five hundred feet from schools. A map showing the zoning districts where pharmacies may be located and the five hundred foot exemption are in your packet. Based on state regulations, the city has three options regarding medical marijuana dispensaries. The city can permit dispensaries within the city, allow dispensaries within the same regulations that are currently in the LDRs for pharmacies, or amend the current regulation for pharmacies in response to the state law. Staff is requesting council provide direction regarding regulation of medical marijuana dispensaries.
Okay. City Attorney, do you have any comments you want to make at this point? As to the moratorium that's existing?
It is true, we do have a moratorium. That was imposed, I believe that will expire in December, so that is in place now, so of course, this is discussion. For council, any additional information we can bring back to you. You're not required to make any decisions tonight, of course, you, you can give us direction as you so, are so inclined, but just be aware, there is a moratorium in place through December.
My personal opinion on, on this one is that we leave the moratorium in, in place, and there are cities all around us actually, including Orlando, that are what, dealing with this item, and it might be worth it to see who's doing what, especially the county, because we're sitting here, and what we do, what they do is going to affect what we should do, so I would recommend that we just leave it, the moratorium until we get some further information as to what other communities are doing. Mayor, go ahead.
Okay.
No buttons?
No buttons. We have no buttons to decide who's going to talk first.
You're next.
So I got it this time. I read the statute this afternoon and yesterday. It is close to eighty pages long.
Yes, it is.
It is long, 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 and is very detailed. My concern was, are we going to have people smoking pot in public? Are we going to have people walking up and down the streets with it? Is it going to be near daycares, schools? Are we going to have an influx of marijuana dispensaries? And is, the statute, I was really amazed, is very tight. It's, you, they've divided the state up into districts, and you can only have a certain amount of facilities within those districts. You cannot smoke on the street, you cannot be near a school. Provides a lot of criminal penalties for violations. I, I would hate to see us wait until the last minute and then try to put it together. And I would also, would like to see us restrict the pharmacies and the medical marijuana dispensaries to a smaller area where we don't have people moving this kind of thing next to a daycare, for instance. Because I don't want a pharmacy next to a daycare, so I'm not real sure why, why.
I would just comment that the, the staff feels that that is the option that we would be let, the least comfortable with, and this is the reason. As soon as you do that, you make all existing pharmacies that don't meet those requirements non-conforming. They can't expand them, they can't replace them, they, now, every Walgreens, every CVS, every Publix, every Target, every pharmacy that's out there is very likely to become non-conforming, which means that you have a lot of unintended consequences.
Okay, I could see what you're saying. Seems like the voters in the state have, have spoken, and they want it, and I'm, and I'm glad that there are some limitations on it. I'm not totally happy with it, but at least we have some limitations on who can get the marijuana, and there's some third-degree felonies for physicians who dispense it or write the prescription without good cause. There's, I think it's a felony if you give it to somebody other, or somebody who's entitled to, to it cannot give it to another person, so there were a lot of restrictions on it. I just, I don't want to wait till the last minute.
I share, I share your concerns on all of it. In this particular case, I think it would serve us better to wait for a while to see what other, other communities are doing again, because that's going to affect us as far as the voters, yes, the voters voted on it and accepted it. I think, very frankly, in my opinion, they were sold a bit of bill of goods, because all I heard about was kids and people with certain things and so forth, but those uses of marijuana are already there in oil form, and the only reason I can see for this judgment that it has to be, has to be done in another form is to open the door for...
Equalization?
What, yeah, with Councilman Diesel said, people walking down the street smoking pot or wherever.
And it's been...
So, but at this point, I don't think we're, I really don't think we're in a position to make a decision, so.
Mayor, if I could, we do have some cards, so could possibly bring the cards up before you continue with the dialogue?
Yeah, okay, before we make a motion. Is any, anything else council wants to say at this point?
Yeah, I would, and, and simply put, I have a couple of concerns, and I think what we're dealing with here is a concern that seventy-one percent of the Florida voters voted for this. You can't deny that, I can't run from that, that's where it is. But I also feel like the state has made a bit of another hit on home rule, and it's made it difficult for us to, to do the things exactly as we want to do them when they give us two options for dispensaries, and one of them is basically to treat it like a pharmacy. And, and that bothers me greatly. I think these need to be treated a whole lot more careful, and, and with their located, how they're located, and how they're treated. They were approved seventy-one percent. I, but I don't want to see one wherever I have a CVS and a Walgreens, I don't want to see them right next door, so I have some concerns. I will say the concern that people state sometimes that Titusville is slow to react, and, you know, we're kind of followers or whatever. I was paying attention, and just last night, Orlando tabled this very subject with very little discussion, and said they need more time, so, that's where I'm at.
I appreciate that, and sometimes waiting, you can learn from the errors of others.
Errors, yeah, that's true.
So I think, I really do think it might be very wise on, on this one. We have cards out there?
I apologize, sir, I, I saw cards for twelve B, not twelve A, so there aren't no cards for this item.
Okay. Well, then, what's your... Well, then, what's your pleasure, counsel?
I had a comment, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't believe that the state of Florida has the, I don't, well, not believe, I don't recognize the authority of the state of Florida to regulate this. I don't recognize it. It's a violation of federal law. So the state of Florida can write anything they want, but it doesn't, it, I have yet to hear an argument that supersedes the violation of federal law. I don't. I've heard enforcement arguments, I've heard a policy of federally at this point. The only reason I believe that this is taking place is because although illegal, there's an act in place that says we're not going to prosecute it, but that could flip tomorrow. Could, not saying it will. As part of a republic, although we in the state of Florida overwhelmingly went to the ballot to support an initiative that calls for legalization, of which overwhelmingly, I agree, get it, we are one of numerous states, and we are part of a republic, and the law of the land currently says no. So, how do you balance that? As an example of some of the underlying issues with this, we are going to ask city staff, I think, that part of this process will be to stamp, approve, sign off on a business tax receipt for a dispensary of medical marijuana, which any other way that you could cut it, I think makes you complicit in illegal drug dealing, to the volume of which we will be asked to do so. So when that staff member quits because they won't comply with an illegal action, what do we do? What do we do? Do we get fired? Do we, I don't know. But these are some of the questions that we don't have answers for at this point. And I think that the only reason that we currently have this discussion, one is because people in the state of Florida have said, yes, we want this, which to add it as an amendment to our constitution is a huge deal. So I can't, that, to me, is an amazing thing. But the state legislature, as written, has put us in a position at this point to have only two options. It's either you take what the state legislature has presented, or you take nothing. That's the option that I believe that we've been given, because as written, the state legislature says, has put a preemption clause in, which mean that we as a city could have an agreement to dispensaries, we could say yes to medical marijuana, but we can't do it in a way that's tailored to our city. We're not allowed to do that. That we have only what the state legislature has said, it looks like this, or you do nothing. And I'm not okay with that legislation as written, although I'm agreeable to writing our own, as a city, our own zoning, our own everything, soup to nuts, what fits for our city. And the reason that I think that that is an appropriate option is because the same argument that the state of Florida has taken, I think is the same exact argument that we as a city can be afforded. Folks, folks went out, they voted, and they said yes on the ballot, fine, we hear you, got it. So we as a body, if the violation of federal law is going to not be enforced, not whatever, I don't think that the state has the authority to enforce it, but I'm realistic in that it's coming. So I would rather create our own, do it exactly what the city of Titusville wants, and I would rather have the state of Florida take us to court for violating what they believe is law. I would rather go that route, because I think it's a cruel issue.
As I noted.
I think at this point, they've given us, they've given us no option, or they've given us a poor option, and said, deal with it. And here's my worst concern, is that when we, or, not us, but when a city begins to jump on it because people are waiting, that the legislation up and coming over the next three or four years is going to be so far off that down the road, when, because I am a firm believer that recreational use is going on the ballot probably by two thousand twenty-two, I think that's going to happen, because I'm already seeing petitions for it, it, right? So as we go through this next few year process, the controls that need to be in place to ensure that when that potentially comes, that we have the authority, has already been established to regulate it ourself. And that's, to me, that's the most, that's one of the most critical components of this issue. Because left to a yes or no option, I'll default to no, because I don't think that as written, we'll be able to do it right. I don't think we'll be able to do it right. I think that the moment that, and I'm not saying it would be good business practice, but to be fair, when we just approved that daycare next to the church, well, maybe that's a school, maybe it's not. And when the dispensary opens up next door to it, I'm not worried about the dispensary. I'm worried about the collateral to the dispensary that we've seen with pill mills that were done ineffectively, right? So good intent, but done poorly. I'm thinking about our adult arcades that were implemented but done poorly. And I think that this is one of those things that you do it right, okay. I think that the people of the state of Florida have said yes, but I think that the legislature gave us a poor option. And I think that most importantly, that if we don't hold on to the home rule and ability to regulate this, that we'll, we'll find ourselves in a hole that we then can't get out of down the road. So that's my thought. So create our own, and then have someone challenge us on it.
And that's an option, and maybe the best option, I don't know at this point, but I do know that the federal, you mentioned the fact that it's against federal law, it is, and yet there are states that have it going on right now, California, Colorado, and so forth, Alaska. So it's, it's already been established that federal law is just being bypassed, but, and again, that's why I think we have to take our time and do it correctly. You projected a lot of information and a lot of questions, but you're not sure of the answers either, so I think if we just started in doing what's right, I always love what's right, because we all want to do what's right, it's finding out what right is. So again, I'll just go back to, let's, let's keep the moratorium, let's start thinking about, based on information that we're getting from reactions from county and other cities and throughout the state. I mean, this is not just here, this is, the whole state's dealing with this and having a hard time with it, but we may get some good ideas as to what to do and what's right by watching some of the other cities, and I want to be that cautious, and I think you and all of us want to be that cautious, so that's where I'm at. Any other?
Now, I was just going to say, typically, basically what we're doing, this doesn't stop us from prosecuting people for possession of marijuana, and we've done that for years. I did it for thirty-five years, so I know how to do that. And it's, as somebody who used to do a lot of drug cases, you know, this does give me pause, you know, because I've done this. I don't want us to be, wait too long where we're scrambling to get something put together. I think we need to do something only because it's for our citizens, and I agree, it's not, it's not a perfect statute, it's a heck of a lot better than I've seen them give me on some other stuff. And I told Mr. Broome, I said, when they wrote the Jimmy Rice statute for the commitment of sex offenders, it was one paragraph long, and they handed it to us and said, oh, figure out how to do this. And there was nothing about time limits, there was nothing about what kind of petitions that had to be filed, there was nothing about what the evidence was going to be, or where these people were going to be kept, so I was happier with the statute than I expected. And I sort of think we owe it to some of the people who are terminal, to keep them away from some of those medications, the opioids, which are so, so horrible. But I have no problem waiting and seeing what other people do.
Yeah, and I think we can charge staff with, while we are in that moratorium, to start looking and putting things together and seeing who's doing what, et cetera, et cetera, and take, take advantage of that time, we're not just going to stop.
And I'm not totally happy with the way, what they've given us. You know, so it's sort of like, you do it and try to help your citizens, and realize that they're talking about one dispensary for every hundred thousand, or no, it's four dispensaries for every hundred thousand people who are on the registry. So I can't see us having an overabundance of pot dispensaries here. But it's either we help the people, or we just say, that's it, we're not doing it. That's not a good choice.
Member Diesel?
Just real quick, because I simply want to reiterate, and I think that Vice Mayor and I are saying an awful lot of the same things, and one of the things that concerns me, and I just want to reiterate that, is, you know, I know that, you know, we have a state that fights for states' rights and has a say in how the state gets things done, and yet it appears to me the state has tossed something down to us that takes away, you know, our rights to do the way we want to get it done. So I think that they have, once again, maybe not intentionally, maybe so, hit home rule, and I think what I'm looking for more, as Vice Mayor and I think both said, is, how's it fit for us? I mean, the state did support it, seventy-one percent, and I'm not going to go against seventy-one percent, it's coming, we know it's coming. But how we do it might not be the same way Miami does it, might not be the same way Jacksonville or Orlando or Tampa does it. It may line up more with somebody like a Lakeland or somebody like that, you know, that's more demographically and number-wise like us. I'd like to have that right to do it the way it fits for us, and I think the state has kind of tried to take that away from us with just a couple of options, and that bothers me.
I want to comment on the seventy-one percent, that was the second vote, they did not do it, the state did not do it, the people of the state did not vote, well, it was majority, but it wasn't enough to make the needed percentage, I don't remember, sixty-something. But on the second go-round, they, if you notice the advertising and so forth, and to me, the people of the state were sold a bill of goods by certain forces that have maybe another purpose to it, that was, but, good timing.
Good timing.
I have other thoughts as to why they want to do it, and it's so marijuana can be sold for street use. But it's also possible that as this gets aired out further, there may be a reaction to it saying, oh, I didn't know that, I thought this was for little kids, and we had to do it, and so forth and so on. Maybe that's hope against hope, but it still comes down, I think what we're all saying at this point, we don't like what we got. We've got to look at it carefully before we do something, and my point again goes back to, let's, let's work with everybody in the state thinking about it, all the cities and counties and so forth, and I got a feeling there's going to be a lot of good ideas coming out of that, these discussions from individual cities and counties as to how to help it, or to go back to the state and say, look, you messed up, let's, let's relook at this thing, so.
Sir, you have additional comment?
Sure.
And I guess two, two concerns, and to Member Nelson, that, that equational population versus dispensary.
Right.
Devil's advocate, maybe it's not enough. And this, that's where I'm going, so I'm not advocating one way or the other, but I, but I thoroughly believe that, and to Member Diesel's point as well, that there will be portions to this that will work for our community in contrast, and I, what I'm not, I am also, I am less inclined to engage, to engages, when I think that there are a handful of businessmen that are going to make a killing off it. And I don't think that that's fair if this market is established, I also don't think that that's appropriate. So there, there, there are compound, there are compounding arguments, whether I agree with them or not, I think they're fair to be vetted. The only, I guess additional, although we have a moratorium in place until December, and I would agree prudence is appropriate, I also would hope to look at if November is a year from the time that a voter went to the box, that, I don't, I don't think that there's a commitment to that timeframe, but I think that a year after a voter goes, this is what we're doing, that as a city, we should have arrived at a decision of whatever's happening.
Well, and October first is their deadline for giving out the dispensary papers.
Right.
And putting together their registration, their online registration, where if somebody's, the doctor says this is, you were entitled to, to a prescription for marijuana, that should all be up and running by October first. So that may help us out.
And sir, to the, to the members as well, I was in contact with our federal representatives on this as well, and, and, you know, my expression to them was, you're, you're putting us in a bind, you know, because at the end of the day, whatever the case may be, the issue is nonexistent, just nonexistent, minus, I think Nevada just kind of threw it up there, but it's nonexistent at the federal level on, on what we're going to work on today. And the fact that that is the case, knowing as many states are engaged in this one way or the other, the fact that it's not even in discussion, I, you know, looking, moving forward, it may be worth a look at a resolution potentially from this council to say, tell us what direction you're going, or just so you know, X amount of states have approved this, we think this, we're yet, because that, otherwise, we're looking at, I think, a ten-year period where there's no engagement federally, and that gray period, that's a generation of people that grow up going, yeah, it's the law, but nobody cares, right? So we have kids that are sixteen to twenty-six, growing up, knowing that, ah, it's illegal, but doesn't matter. And these are some other concerns that I have, so, thank you.
Okay, I think we've said all there is to say at this point.
We now have one card, sir?
We do have one.
Yes, sir.
All right, if you'll come up, please.
Hi, I'm Heather Summy, did not expect to speak on this behalf. You will see my face on both sides of this fence. When I grew up in Main Street, so I'm well aware of drugs, crime, and everything that goes along with it. On the other side, with medical marijuana, I have friends that are suffering, so I understand the need for it. Like you said, there, we should, I would, there's several things I want to bring up. I know you're saying you want to talk to other cities, I would say, non-Orlando, non-Florida cities, the ones that, did they have lessons learned after the fact? Like Colorado, Nevada, I'm not sure of all the other states, but is there lessons learned that y'all can, like, get from them, versus trying to learn the mistakes already too late in Florida, because it is different? Also, if you're talking about with other city government, why don't you talk to the community? Is there, I mean, I know this is city hall, and the community can be involved, and there should be here, but I'm involved in Facebook, like a lot of you are, and there's a lot But I'm involved in Facebook, like a lot of you are, and there's a lot of bitch sessions. Just put it out there. They're bitch because they just don't know anything. I'm ignorant, they're ignorant on both sides, and I like to alleviate that. I know I can't eliminate it, but I like to alleviate some of the ignorance, because it's easier to bitch than to...
Ma'am, I'd ask you to leave the...
Sorry.
Terms out.
And I would like to be someone who can face on that, be that person on that Facebook to communicate. So is there anything I can do to get some more people here to contribute their opinions? Because government politicians not always, always know what the community are thinking. They may think what they're thinking, but they may not know. So I don't know if there's like a separate forum that we can bring the city in for this topic? I mean, it's a big deal. It's going to affect children, it's going to affect businessmen. Why can't we take this because it's so serious and affects federal level, which is more serious? And a lot of people don't realize the restrictions of the state. They think, oh, Titusville, behind the times, I'm shaking my head, they're probably not going to prove it because that's Titusville, and that's what you're going to get. They're not going to read the 80-page.
Yeah.
They're not going to do it.
It's soil reading, too.
Right, and they're not going to do it. And I know they're not going to do it. And they're just going to see that you didn't pass it, and they're going to say, that's Titusville.
But it's...
And Orlando last night.
Yeah.
So...
Button. Yeah. I like that.
So I would, I would like to entertain the idea of having this as a separate forum for the community specifically for this idea. I don't know if that's even possible, because I'm not familiar with the process.
If I may, yes, it's certainly possible. I think it's premature right now.
Of course.
But when it's appropriate, we probably will do just that. I do have a question for you, Ari. You mentioned, your first statement was you have friends waiting for medical marijuana?
Yes.
What are they waiting for?
They're waiting for relief. They're waiting for not being on...
What kind of medical marijuana?
I don't know the specifics because I don't have their different diseases.
Every other medical marijuana that's oil form and so forth is available now. Are they wearing, waiting for smokeable?
Again, I just, I don't have it, again, I'd expect to speak on this. I just know that they've expressed their interest.
You might want to research that a little bit, too, because the others are available.
Right, like I said, I just spontaneously came up.
No, I'm not chastising you, I'm just, I heard your comment, and I'm getting to it.
I think that there's a lot of hoops that they have to go through in the, I know I'm like maxing out my thing.
But we were talking to you, so we'll...
Because I can talk a lot.
Another minute?
Sure. I'll let you have a minute.
You guys got to vote, man. They're all going to vote against you. I have a margin for a minute?
Oh, yeah, second.
Another minute, second. Those in favor say yes.
Yes.
So I'd like to plant the seed, you know, basically, and I'm glad I came up because I wanted to at least put it out there that I think the community would be welcomed to both enlighten the facts and alleviate maybe the pressure you guys get from the community that's unnecessary, and it may be a happy medium to have a separate forum.
And I think we will probably do that when it's appropriate. Thank you very much for coming up.
Someone's hands being raised?
Say again?
My hand's raised.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I thought she was asking you a question. Go right ahead. Thank you for raising your hand.
It would be interesting, Mr. Broom, if we could put a short summary of the statute, wrote the, as written, with some of the information online. Is that a possibility?
Certainly, I've provided you a summary in my memo. I can, we can further update that.
It'd just be so that people understand that these are some of the things that people can't do.
Right.
These are some of the things people can do, and maybe that would stop some of misinformation from floating around.
Yes.
Right, and as you know, the basic summary for us is, as was stated, ban them or pharmacies.
Well, no, I was, I wasn't quite thinking that.
Well, when it comes, just thinking for our decision is what we want to do zoning lanes-wise is, either we ban them or they're pharmacies. There was some suggestion about talk to people, see what worked. Well, we've been preempted from creating our own regulations.
Yep.
So we can't create a code by preemption that, that details what we want as a city, and that was the issue you heard about home rule. We feel like it's a real attack on home rule because they've taken away our ability to legislate for our city. That's the issue.
Yeah, and I totally get that, and also because my ignorance of the process and even the definition of home rule. I mean, it might be like, you could even put an asterisk on the home rule and then define home rule. I know it takes them two seconds to go on Google, but people are lazy. They're not, they're going to say, what, what's another word that I don't know about? I know it's a little extra effort, but just like on Facebook, someone says, what are the hours of Playlinda? I went Googled Playlinda hours, and it took me two seconds versus someone waiting for five minutes to hear what Playlinda hours are. People are lazy. And I'm just going to, I'm frank. So if you can put a little bit more average, because, you know, a lot of people aren't, you know, the intellect, and you're not saying that anybody's stupid, I'm just saying that sometimes we aren't familiar with a subject that we are not in, and those words are foreign to us, not that we can't understand them, but they're foreign. And anything that's foreign to someone is ignorance, not, not lack of intelligence.
Thank you, ma'am. I think your minute is up. Thanks for coming up, though. We have the police chief here, and I would very much like to ask you to come up, John, give us your feelings on this. Chief?
Well, the Florida police chiefs are against the dispensaries. So we believe it's...
Why?
Because it's going to be a gateway. We have colleagues in other states, and it hasn't worked out very well. I think it's being sold as one thing, and it's another, and it's just not something that we're ready to support yet. And it's nothing to do with the medical side of it. It's where we come from, medical pharmacies should be doctors and people that are qualified. It's just not the way it's worked in other states, so our association is not supporting.
I totally agree with you, and as I recall, the sheriff came in before the, the prior vote was signed, I guess it was two years before, and said the same thing and pointed out some, a lot of other things about how those states are exporting their, their products to other states that haven't dealt with it. So it's, it's not easy, but I totally agree with you, John. Anything else, any questions for the police chief?
I have a question. I have not read some of the other statutes. Are, are statute, I'm assuming modeled after somebody else's statute. Is it more restrictive than, say, Colorado, or California, or some of the other statutes?
Colorado and California, Nevada, they have advanced past where, where currently, so... But when it didn't pass the first time through, there was some language with the Sheriff's Association and the Chiefs Association, and there was, there was some tweaking on the petitioners. And so it has gotten more restrictive. We just think there's still some, some more areas that, you know, we, we need to be. It's just, again, we're, the, the bar chiefs and sheriffmen, we're all unanimous, and it's the same thing with the state of Florida.
I'll tell you what concerned me, was they were talking about background checks for people who are in that business. And they said you're disqualified if you've been convicted or racketeering, money laundering, and like a business fraud. But they didn't say anything about if you were a drug dealer, you know, could you have a medical dispensary?
The reality is, anybody who's in pain and can find relief from any type of a source, we certainly want to go there. That, there's many pills that are prescribed by doctors for pain, post-surgery and sometimes chronic pain. When the pill mill issue came in, the reality is, we had caravans of vans from Ohio on Cheney Highway coming into the pill mill. That wasn't the case. So it's being sold as these unfortunate folks that are suffering, and we get that, we understand that. But that's not what's being done. So what's being sold and, and the reality of what happens are two different things. And all we're saying is, it's just no, just say no right now, because it's not going to work out real well. And if it seems to work out, and the association is wrong down the road, change then. But I don't, I don't know why, it didn't work for us on the pill mill, and we had to do some serious backstroke and to fix that.
The pill mills were, those were horrible.
And all it was, was the language in these statutes that are 80 pages, where excerpts are twisted and interpreted differently, and before you know it, there's a loophole. And we have a traffic jam on Cheney Highway so that they can get their pills, not for their chronic or post-surgery problems, for their addiction. That's the issue.
I think the pills scared me more than marijuana. Those things were so addictive.
Sir? And, and I think inclusive, whether it's supported or not, but inclusive of an idea of write our own, I think contingent of that would definitely be the protection of our law enforcement agency for discretion. So whatever tools are applicable or needed to, as the state of Florida moves forward with X, Y, or Z, that we have in place, whether or not the state of Florida recognizes it or not, but we have in place at a best-case scenario of what we would want in the event that the state of Florida turn over their legislation and default to the cities. So at, in my best-case scenario, the state of Florida says, we got one part of the management, but you as cities determine how this rolls out, and then we enact whatever we, we come up with, that whatever we drive towards, if that be the case, is comprehensive of all of the needs of law enforcement. So I just...
Again, we're back to the point, I don't know how many more things we can go over here and change anything. I think it's all, all been said, and again, my feeling is to leave the moratorium in place, let staff look at what's going on around the state, and particularly with those, our county, as to what they do, and we'll make a decision at, at an appropriate time that we have that information. Is that, we have consensus on that?
We do.
Mr. Saka? Thank you both, and thank you all very much. I think we're on item 12B.
Yes, sir, Riverfront Park Improvement and Knox-McRae Baffle Box Construction. On April 27, 2017, the city solicited sealed bids for the construction of the Riverfront Park Improvements and Knox-McRae Baffle Box under bid 17B018. Forty-seven firms out of 622 firms were notified, obtained bid documents. Three firms submitted bids which were opened on 16 June 2017. The tabulation of these three are in your packet. It is recommended that the city council approve the budget amendment to provide the necessary funds for Riverfront Park improvements and approve the award of the contract to Carr and Collier Incorporated of Leesburg, Florida, in the amount of $1,487,820 for the construction of the Riverfront Park Improvements and the Knox-McRae Baffle Box, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Additionally, approve the project creation for the park construction. We have our Public Works Director, Mr. Kevin Cook, here to describe the, the project. And on your computers is the loaded diagrams and the bid packages for your consideration.
Mr. Cook, how are you this evening?
Good.
Good.
The same manner mentioned, we loaded the final plan documents for both portions of the project. It was Baffle Box and the Riverfront Park. Baffle Box is partially state-funded, $110,000 from a legislative budget a year ago. So we have that contribution into that. And the rest of it is a split between general fund, stormwater fund, and the riverfront acquisition to pay for the park improvements. The Baffle Box is solely a stormwater project. Be happy to answer any questions. This was approved back in 2014 under a concept. Take a look at some of the key features further into the, the plan documents. There's a, a custom arbor and swing set that kind of takes the bend of the sidewalk. Some other custom wood creative features. We didn't take forward any of the options that were in the bid. If you saw the bid tab, they have some options, or extensions appear and things. There's another $140,000 that we didn't move forward with, we just moved forward the base bid. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions for Mr. Cook?
Okay. Mr. Cook, exactly where am I on this map?
For which portion?
I, I don't know.
That's a little confusing, but...
Yeah, these are...
Go to that one.
Are you looking as to where it is?
If you're looking at it geographically where it is, it's...
Okay.
Sorry.
Right across from Elliott and Cito is a geographic location.
Okay, so you're talking about putting, that looks like a sidewalk?
They're going to replace the sidewalks that are there. Parking will stay, it'll be some regrading on the parking. The drainage structure will go to underground retention. So it'll be flattened field. The existing structures that are there replaced with new structures as far as picnic shelters. The pier will be renovated to a degree, some changing of the railing. It's currently upright pickets, so it'll be changed out to more horizontal, that's sustained a little better. Lighting will be added, a new landscape package. Bells and whistles as far as garbage cans, benches, the arbors that we described, the landscape designer came up with, will be added. And then on the north end of the project will be where the Riverfront Park will tie through the Baffle Box, the Baffle Box will collect the full outfall of Knox-McRae and treat it and introduce it back to the river.
Any other questions?
We have one card.
Yes, please call the caller.
Laurel Ward River Edge Drive, property in, in the River City. The park is part of that neighborhood. I've followed this park for about 10 years, probably 13.
Me, too.
Yeah, well, too. And somewhere along 2016, I kind of lost track of it. Have you all had meetings on the park where you got to see what it looked like and everything since you've become council members? So it's like, you don't, you've never really even seen the pictures of it, right, of what it's supposed to look like? Other than what you can try to see there, it's mainly about Kevin's Baffle Box.
Other than what I can see here. I know the property because originally my dad owned the property.
Yeah, I thought so.
Yeah, so I know the property. I used to, I used to respect right there, so, yes, I know the property.
Okay.
And I've noticed the improvements over the years.
Well, the park was constructed with those two retention holes in it, which were not satisfactory to anybody. So it was redesigned. And now, I mean, I can't even look at that thing on the computer. Kevin sent it to me, but it's very difficult to see. Is this the same park as we saw the printed-out renderings of back in 2014, or 15, or 16?
Yeah, it was 2014, there was a workshop, and this is the same, this is the engineered version of that.
So it has parking in a big circle down at the bottom, so there is parking on the site?
Yeah, there's still parking, yes.
Okay, and there's no holes for the retention pond, it's all underground?
Mm-hmm, yep.
And it has, does have a boardwalk along the riverside, or is that the, what's there now is going to stay, the concrete?
No, it's going to, the concrete we moved. The option for the boardwalk was a, look at, it was a $120,000 add-on, I think, that we didn't move forward.
Often not.
Yeah, yeah, so, but it would relocate, and there'll be shoreline improvements as well.
Okay, so that was my question. I want to know what it is y'all are voting on, because we don't get any pictures anymore, and I can't read that thing that's on the computer. I do have one further question is, this money that's being used for these improvements will essentially wipe out the Riverfront Referendum's Acquisition Fund, which is not part of the general fund. It's a separate money. which is not part of the general fund. It's a separate money, was created when the residents voted to acquire waterfront property. And when that first park was constructed, we raised the question of whether or not the city owes the referendum fund back the money that was spent on that first park, being the holes in the ground. Because what was presented to the council for approval did not show those holes in the ground. What was constructed were these deep retention ponds, which the city was using to take on the FDOT water onto the site. So there was a big, like a controversy over whether or not the referendum fund should be repaid, the money that was spent to construct the original park, the thing that's there now with the deep pits. And I didn't, I don't know if that ever even came up for your council. And I don't know how it was resolved for the last council. So I'm asking you, do you owe the referendum fund money or not?
I can share that the funding sources for the project are sixty percent non-referendum. So while the Riverfront Referendum is contributing, forty percent, sixty percent are coming from other sources, landscape mitigation, stormwater, and general fund. So-
Well, that's not, that's irrelevant to my question.
Well, what I'm saying is that the other funds are contributing eight hundred thousand dollars to the project.
And it's also creating a baffle box that has nothing to do with the park.
No, this, that number I gave you is based on the one point three million that is on the park only. The baffle box is solely a stormwater function.
This thing that I saw, Kevin, said the referendum fund was contributing five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Five hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and three.
Five hundred and thirty-six, half a million dollars out of the referendum fund. Referendum fund only had, the last time I looked at it, six hundred thousand dollars in it. So it wipes out the referendum fund. My question is, would the council entertain at least looking into whether or not the city itself owes the referendum fund, which is a different thing altogether, money that was spent, in my opinion, was spent improperly on the first park? So that's my question. I mean-
I think that's a legal question. I don't think we can make any kind of a decision on that.
Well, I wouldn't expect you to make it this minute, you know.
Okay, but we would need legal input on it. City Attorney, you have any comment on that?
No, I do recall this being brought up probably a couple of years ago.
I know, it's like it all goes into the mist.
Council heard the request and decided at that time not to take action, that they weren't going to pay back the referendum fund.
Did they actually?
That was looked at. There was, there's been no direction, let's put it that way, to repay back anything.
I don't recall any discussion among the council about having it looked into and brought up as an item for them to decide on.
Correct. The request was brought up at a council meeting probably more than one time. And out of those requests, like you are doing tonight, there was no direction given by that council. That's what I can tell you.
So I'm asking you all if you would consider at least investigating it.
I don't see why. Was there research done at that time on this?
I can't recall. I would really have to look back. I can't recall, it was a couple of years ago, as far as the details.
I think it would be appropriate to ask him to dig up whatever research is already done and take a look at it, and we may go or not go from there.
I didn't hear.
Well, I said, I think we, as a group, if we agree, the council will ask the city attorney to get that information for us that has already been done, and then make a judgment on whether we're going to go or not go based on that information. If it's already been researched, we already have the answer.
That's true. And it has nothing to do with an action that you might take tonight on this other thing? It's a separate request?
Yeah, that's absolutely nothing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Ms. Ward.
Ms. Ward.
Yeah, thank, for, I guess, follow-up or appropriate follow-up or questioning. For, from a staff standpoint, I would be interested in, if it's been discussed and there was a decision on it-
There wasn't.
-time, time or date that it was discussed, I'm comfortable with. Just from a position that I would take on it would be, if it was expenditures approved by council, then I, just moving forward, I would say bad investment, right? So even if the information is questionable, right, then I think that there's due diligence on a council's, council member's behalf to go, is it right or wrong? And if you make a wrong call, then it costs a lot of money.
Can I respond?
Oh, please.
Okay. I think that's okay in most cases, but I think you all need to, since it's a new council, I think you need to have a little history of what that acquisition fund actually is, where it came from, how it was created. And it had very specific ways you could spend the money, ways you couldn't. I'm not suggesting that that was not done right. I think it probably was. But I think you need to have some history, and then you make your decision.
That's fair. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, do you have instructions? Very good. We're on to petitions and requests.
Sir, we'll need to approve this by-
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, right. Approve the award of the contract to Carr and Collier Inc. of Leesburg for the construction of the Riverfront Park Improvements and Knox-McRae Baffle Box in the amount of one million four hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Additionally, to approve the project's creation for the park construction.
Yes, ma'am. And the first item would be to approve the budget amendment to provide the necessary funds for the improvement.
Okay, do we do that all as one, or?
I would take them up separately.
All right.
I move to approve the budget amendment to provide the necessary funds for the Riverfront Park Improvements.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
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 Passes unanimously. We have the second part now.
I've moved to approve the award of the contract to Carr and Collier Inc. of Leesburg, Florida, for the construction of the Riverfront Park Improvements and the Knox-McRae Baffle Box in the amount of one million four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, one hundred, yeah, one million.
One million.
Four hundred and eighty-seven.
Eight hundred and twenty.
Eight hundred and twenty dollars, and authorize you to execute the contract.
All right. Additionally?
Approve the project creation for the park construction.
Very good, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes, passes unanimously. Now, petitions and requests. Anybody have something for petition and request? No? Okay. You have my report. Are there any reports from council members? See none. City manager's report, sir.
Yes, sir. Just several information items I'd like to go through with council. We do have the legislative priorities coming up from the floor of Lake of Cities. We've drafted for submission on your behalf, the document that's in your packet. Just want to make sure that that's what you want to transmit to the floor of Lake of Cities for your legislative priorities.
Any comments, if you can find it?
Second, we were able to install the plaque at Drayfield signage that council requested. It's located at a very nice spot, so if you haven't had a chance to go out and see it, we've taken a picture of it and put it in your packet, but it's a welcome addition to the park for those that are using that great facility now. Follow-up on park, North Brevard County Park and Recreation Budget Update, including your packet, is the information that was requested by council, by the North Brevard Park and Recs. A couple items that you asked for that is not available. You asked for numbers of the, number of attendees that the programs provided. That data is not available. You also ask for scoring or how each one of the programs currently available is evaluated. That is not available, but the Park and Recs Director has assured us that they are working diligently to, number one, score the events and programs that they have, and keep records on the attendance of those particular items. Additionally, we've provided you the Welcome Center data. You see that we are continuing to average a little less than a thousand visitors a month in that facility, which is awesome.
Yes.
And as part of our nine eleven preparation, Chief Woodward's going to move, as you entered into the fire station tonight, you saw a rep, or a artifact of the nine eleven Twin Towers. We're going to move that over to the Welcome Center to get more visibility of that particular artifact as we approach the anniversary of the nine eleven. We're also working on having our nine eleven ceremony at the Welcome Center in the Julia Street Parking Lot this year, since the artifact is there. And last is the final SEDC report to council, and that contract will end at the end of the fiscal year. We have provided council your budget book of the proposed budget, and the next step of that will be a budget workshop in August, and we welcome your questions, comments, and adjustments to that budget. And just for your information, we are, our current millage is what we built the budget on. Subject to your questions, that completes my briefing.
I want to touch on that last part about the present millage. Historically, and you and I have discussed this, city manager, but I want to make sure that the rest of the council has an input. We have done over that amount, generally going to the ultimate amount of the taxes so that if anything comes up, we have some wiggle room. We're not doing that, I'm not saying we have to do that, I just want to make sure.
Sir, so we are going to build additional beyond what we built the proposed budget on. You're allowed to go ten mills above the rollback rate. We are going to add some flexibility into council as a tentative millage rate, which you'll adopt at our next meeting.
Okay. I don't think that was what I understood the last time we spoke.
Yeah, we just, we've changed since the last time we spoke, sir.
Oh, okay, that's why. Okay, thank you. Anything else anybody has for the good of the order?
Real quick, I just have a-
Oh, wait, I forgot. One thing, please.
That's fine.
I forgot the city attorney. City Attorney, sir?
No, sir.
Your turn.
Just real quick, tomorrow morning I meet with Reverend Blatt, I believe his name is, who, it's First Church, or I'm sure the name of the church, but who now runs the Gibson Center. So I'm very curious and excited to meet with him and see where we can go with that, and again, to add to our cause of helping our youth.
Very good.
Okay. So, I'll add.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
And I'm meeting with the Space Museum on Thursday. They are interested in having the Boys and Girls Club out at the Whispering Hills Elementary School. So if that works, I think we're ready to go.
Wow, nice.
So-
Big wow.
Yeah.
Let's hear it. Throw a last one out.
Say again?
For the good of the order.
Yes, sir.
Only content that was visited at the last Space Coast Legacy Cities Meeting, there was discussion on social media and the impact with Sunshine Law.
Yeah.
It was a good reminder, and, you know, as painted as a scenario, if somebody walked in today and said, "I'd like a public records request from twenty," whatever the day you got elected, to the day of today, for all content, can you produce that content? And it made, it was a great reminder of some of the challenges that are, lie within social media as we, as we know it. And so I think we discussed this previously about a potential policy on social media or someone, so I'm not suggesting that, but it would be worth at least, I think, giving it some thought as council members, because it's not going away. It's only going to get more complicated. And as a, as a member that is evolving with social media as part of this role, I know that there's a learning curve, and I think that whereas a member of council, you may get some experience with it and make sure that you're compliant, but I think of, as a council member, day two, are you a hundred percent right on? And from a policy standpoint, that parameter may help out that member. And so I just, something to think about.
What do you recommend?
Well, I'm not necessarily saying that we should devise a policy on social media, but if it is to the council's pleasure to do so, I'd be happy to look at it, but it may be worth a discussion if there's interest in it.
I'm not sure what you would say, because what it comes down to is you save everything you have, and, you know, archive it or whatever. Generally, the things that are going to the city, or many of the things they already have on each of us, end up being on mine. But other than that, I'm not sure what we can do but-
That's fair.
-save what we have. Do you have another suggestion?
I think at this point with, I think at this point, relative to social media and Sunshine Law, that the state of Florida is, has really only, it's been gray for a little while there, at least from what I think people perceive, that there was some gray. I think it has firmed up from gray to black, and being so, how we choose to deal with that as, as a city is up to, I think, up to direction. But I'm just saying that I believe that there is a shift that is taking place, and I don't see that shift reversing. So I believe that as a responsible, as a responsible member, I agree with you, sir, that, you know, you be a responsible member, take care of it yourself. If that effectively works for the council and the city, then I'm very comfortable with that. But I think we're at a point to where at least it warrants thought, and if there's enough consensus to move forward with policy, then great. But if there's not, and we're just a reminder of, make sure we're all doing what's right, I'm comfortable with that, too.
There's always a danger, it's a two-edged sword when you make a policy.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to comment on that?
Well, we met somebody at our last conference who apparently has violated, you know, social media policy. I think they're enacting one specifically for him, and I really like the guy. He was, he's a great guy. And my thought is, if we see one, if you see one, if one of us sees one and travels, it might be worth looking at and having a discussion on it. Do I think we need to run out and develop one? No, but I think if we see one coming down the pipe, there's something that is worth looking at.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I don't want to say a word.
All right. We've accomplished our goals here, so I will make, call this meeting adjourned.